To go over the budget. And, uh, do we have any sheets that compares out of what's going on?
I have no idea.
Oh, that's great. That's what I'm looking for.
I didn't hand out those sheets I usually send you if you wanted to. I didn't think you had really realized the change in each department.
I have my computer.
Uh, the change.
So they basically summarize all everyone you're gonna talk to. You guys continue to use, everyone was using.
Jeremy Senta.
I have to leave at seven thirty.
Okay, well, so we'll start with this is the treasurer's budget and we move to page nineteen. Chris, before we get started, let me, Ken's gonna come down here and he's gonna explain to you what you kind of can't do, okay? I'm not sure where he is legally. Like you can't.
What?
Like what, for instance?
Ken was gonna give us a budget one-on-one session.
But you can't increase the budget. You can only increase it, okay? But since Dan was new, then you wanna make, just refresh everybody on what you legally can and can't.
You can transfer from contingency, right?
Yes. Okay. The other thing in the full budget.
Oops, sorry about your hammer down, I apologize.
The residential taxes are going down three point oh five percent and the commercial taxes are going down point two five percent, I think it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commercial's going down what track?
Commercial's going down like point two five percent.
Okay.
And homeowners are going down three point oh seven, three point oh five, I think.
I thought it was three point oh two.
Okay, thank you.
That's oversaid, but.
Okay, three point oh five?
I believe it's three point oh five. Okay, the, some of the big items in here, okay? Our sales tax estimates are up seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Basically, we're making it equal to what it was last year, what we see. Okay? Here today, we're even up further than that. Health insurance is going down four hundred thousand dollars. Retirement went up four hundred thousand dollars. And wages as a whole due to contractual issues is up eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so you, those are the big hitters.
Okay.
Ken, you wanna give them a brief, uh, things, rules? Sorry, I apologize. Sitting by my phone, didn't hear it ring. Over the years, I've sent out the, kind of the budget procedure to everybody and I tweak it a little every year because we see new things come up. And just a reminder, right? Who's the chair? The finance chair. So what the finance chair will do is he will call, you know, one or generally a group of pages. So tonight, we actually have the smaller departments, but for example, for engineering, you know, you may call twenty-nine, thirty, and one ninety-eight, all at the same time. For planning, seventy-three, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety-five, ninety-four. They just call the pages, those pages are then on the table. What you do next is generally the department head will then talk about the budget and in particular, if there's any significant changes from last year. Counsel then is welcome to ask any questions of the department head or the controller and Lori are both here, right? Help prepare the budget, get whatever information you may need. Remember though, this is about the budget. This is not a general Q and A to departments, right? If you have non-budgetary questions, you know, please do that or another time. These meetings are long enough as they are. Kind of like you do upstairs, at any point, somebody can say, "Call the page." Okay? There is no holding of a page. There's no motion to hold. A hold is when it doesn't get enough votes to pass. One of the things everybody has to realize is if the page doesn't pass, if when all is said and done, you just never pass a page, then it is as presented, basically by not doing anything you have passed.
You can hold the page to bring or bring back the page?
You can't, nobody can hold a page. A page is, a page is held for another meeting if it doesn't get enough votes to be approved at this meeting. So if you don't get four votes, and everything takes four votes, right? It doesn't matter if there are five of you here or four of you here, it takes four votes to pass a page. So if it passes that night, it's passed and then it can only come up again on reconsideration. If it doesn't get four votes to pass and somebody says, "Call the page," right? Then it's essentially held to one other meeting. We'll have callback pages. If it doesn't get approved at the callback pages, then it's basically approved as presented because you didn't do anything with it. Right? It's your obligation to make any change. You can, according to our code, diminish, reject, or increase budget lines. You can't create budget lines, you don't create new, new systems. And the increase is funny because there are two sections of our code. One says you can and one says you can't. Right? Basically, state law says that you reject or diminish, it doesn't say increase. The way that we have interpreted this over the years and the example I give is if the city budget were, you know, a hundred dollars, right? You can move that a hundred dollars around, but it can't go over a hundred dollars unless you find new revenue, which the controller has to approve. You cannot create new revenue. You cannot say, gee, I think we're gonna get more in sales tax and just decide you're gonna add that to the budget. The controller has to approve anything like that. If you're going to increase something, as a result, it needs to come from contingency. You don't make direct lines. You don't say, "I'm gonna cut log books by five hundred dollars and add it to travel and training." You cut log books by five hundred dollars, that goes into contingency, you move five hundred dollars from contingency to travel and training. Right? Each one of those is a separate motion, each one of those is a separate transaction and the mayor has a line item vetoed. He may decide that reducing log books by five hundred is fine, but he doesn't want to go into travel and training. He may not veto that. So each individual is a separate, if there's no money at contingency, then you can't increase anything because you don't have any money to do it from. Once the page is called, there's a voice vote, right? Our job, really the clerk and my job, is to mark down really the total vote and say it's six-one, four-three, or four-two, because we're gonna have six people because Gio's not here. We really only mark down who voted against it, who was not in the majority. I personally don't care who made the motion. Usually Lee will write that down. You don't, it doesn't matter who seconds the motion, but we write down who's in the minority. And we do that because the minority cannot bring, call for reconsideration.
My only comment will be, if that's the case, we'll just make sure that we're always asking for votes in favor and votes against. Because what has happened a lot in the past is that, you know, you or Chris or Lee will ask, you know, for vote, vote in favor and then.
And everyone kinda go, aight. And then they go, okay.
And we're already on to the next thing.
Correct, you're absolutely right. And what you can do, there's some, there are two things that you can do. One is clearly if you kind of feel like it's voted aye and you wanted to vote no, you know, just say, "I vote no." Right? We'll mark it down. If they think there's any confusion about who's voting for what, we'll do a roll call. But that's very rare. I mean, usually we can tell and we'll just say, "I'm sorry, who voted no?" And, you know, and it was Chris and it was Dan. And we'll mark down those two no's. The other thing that you can do is that I don't wanna hold up somebody's ten pages because one of them, you have a question or you wanna vote no to that. So you can, when they say, "Call pages eighty-nine, eighty-seven," and, you know, they're calling eight pages together, you can say, "When we vote, let's put this one aside." That one may still have to be, you know, come back for another vote, it's gonna be a fallback. So you can ask to separate a vote if it's gonna change how you vote. The, two other quick things. One is salaries. One of the things that I think confuses counsel a great deal is you really have very little to do with the salaries. Those are in the personal lines in most of the budgets, okay? There's really only three salaries that you're involved in. What is the city clerk? Under the code, you're supposed to do that before you get to the budget, you didn't do that, right? So now, if you wanna make any increases to the clerk or the deputy clerk, it's gonna have to come out of contingency. Okay? Two is the mayor. Right now, we haven't created a system yet where, you know, we kind of do the mayors in blocks of four years in advance. As a result, you've gotta decide on the mayor's salary, if it's going to increase, it's gotta come out of contingency. Right? And the third one is yourselves. Same thing, you really haven't taken any action to create a block, you know, this is what counsel will be paid for four years. So as a matter of law, right, you all get a CPI increase. Right? Because that's what the code provides for. Right? And that's what's in the budget that's been presented. Right? The, all the other salaries are either controlled by collective bargaining agreements or they're already set by other ordinance. Like the fire chief, the police chief, those people who are management-tested and those people who are management-appointed are all covered by different sections of the code or the union members by the collective bargaining. The last thing is towards the end, not the fee schedule, but the capital items. Before you get to the fee schedule, you will see there are blocks in that, right? And so it may have a block for parks, okay? We treat that block like it's a separate page, right? So when Parks does their presentation, they're gonna come in and one of the pages is going to be, you know, one ninety-seven, and Parks is gonna present their capital budget. You're gonna vote on it like it's a separate page. And then when all of the capital budgets have been voted on, you make whatever motions, whatever you do, but it's like it's a separate page. And when all of these are done, and then you'll just approve the page at the end. But we treat these like they're separate pages. The departments that are asking for them, they do those presentations, right? And once they're approved, it's the same reconsideration rules and all the other same rules in line. All right? That's a real quick overview, but I know we have lots of people waiting. Ready?
Sure. All right. Introduce Theresa Arrington, she's the treasurer's. When she started, February, January?
Very end of January.
Okay. I don't know that everyone's met her.
No. It's gonna be.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Pleasure. So we'll turn to page nineteen. Any questions for the, for Chuck or Theresa?
Yeah, I got one. Why is office supplies gone?
Okay, so if you notice there under office supplies, it lists each of the categories, copy paper, cashier, toner, all the way down. I wanna draw your attention to the last two items of that list. Water sewer bill, the paper for the bills to be printed on have, has moved from the IT department to the treasurer's department. Same thing with the toner for the copier, that's twelve times one hundred and seventy, so there's the major, so it's just a reclass.
All right. I understand. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do our ratepayers have an option to just go paperless? I know they can do E bill lately.
Yes.
Can they go paperless also?
They can.
And has, have we seen an uptick in that?
Um, a small.
Okay.
Not leaps and bounds like you would think.
We're working on some of that hopefully will expedite that.
That'd be great.
Motion to close page nineteen? Is that to accept?
Accept.
It's a motion to.
Accept.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Pages approved. That's it, that's it on the treasurer.
Thank you very much.
Everyone knows treasurer's rights.
Yes. So we open pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Just wanna give any changes, anything?
Why did you roll your eyes?
Because they had no money in personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, in office supplies, we reduced another two hundred dollars. We're very cost-effective in our department. Into the deals. Printing is the same. The legal ads and advertising, we reduced by fifteen hundred dollars. Again, we found a great deal of avenues to recruit for free out there, so we really don't have the need to use the like career builder, et cetera, that is pretty expensive. There's so many different avenues and you don't have to pay for them, so that's what we have been using. Travel and training went down a little bit, but we are sending someone to the civil service institute, which is next, a year from now, for that training. It's a three-week training. I've already been through it, so we're gonna send another office member. And we took away the five hundred dollars in wellness, just because we can't use it. Everything that we wanted to do, there's always some issue with the legal department. So, um, there's always a lot of liability issues.
Did you remind me what the medical services line is for?
Yes, that's for all our pre-employment hiring, physical exams, drug random, drug testing, reasonable suspicion, et cetera. Whenever we hire all the release officers and firefighters, it's usually about six hundred and fifty dollars per, to go through that process. And then regular hires are up fifty dollars. Now, please.
That makes sense.
Motion to accept twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Second to accept. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you.
And twenty-eight, that's the total for.
It was twenty-seven and twenty.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Okay, Mr. Senator.
We'll open the pages.
Good evening, how is everybody? In a real brief, but positive introductory note, I don't know if you all know Margaret Myers. She is going to be the new assessor effective Monday, September thirtieth, due to my retirement.
Congratulations on that. For you.
It's a real positive.
Good.
Margaret already is in the subject office. So she is on.
All right, so fill us in on page one.
The basic summary of page one is the breakdown of all the different role sections that go into the basic taxable values for the city and the county. These are used and programmatically develop the adjusted base proportions, which are done by a state standardized methodology every year for every budget. Where the ones you see on the page were the ones that were calculated for inclusion.
Okay, and page twenty-one, your budget?
There's a.
Any changes, significant changes?
No, there's been no significant changes. Minor reductions and a couple lines, but we try to keep everything as cost-effective
Any questions on page one?
Motion to accept page twenty-one.
Second to page one?
Page one, motion to accept page one also.
Oh wait. Did we open twenty-one?
Yes.
That's what he was talking about.
To be honest, it would help if I notes if we did a whole assessor set once.
All right, open pages one, twenty-one, and one ninety-four, ninety-five. That's how we should.
Yeah.
That's what we normally do, I thought.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure.
Just opening and then all.
We're gonna be, we opened one, twenty-one, Ross, and opened one ninety-four through one ninety-five. So we can, we vote on them, they'll be voting on it all at one time. Be easier for the.
I just have a question about page one ninety-four.
Sure.
Since I'm new at this, so are these basically exemptions in calculating the equalization rate?
No, this is what this page is, it's called the exemption impact report, and it is exactly that. All of the exemptions that impact the city and county levies, city levies are produced on this report. The total number of exemptions, the, um, the equalized value of the exemptions, which is the amount of the exemption that appears taken off the roll, factored by the equalization rate with a percentage. Because this works on the full market value or the total market value as calculated by the state. And it produces a final value of thirty-four point two-five percent.
That's our exemption rate, thirty-four?
Yes, for, for all of the exemptions that impact the city.
Is there any sort of, like, recommendation of what that percent should be, should look like from some other agency?
Well, there's, and this is, I've looked at this, you know, certainly throughout the years, and the, uh, the easiest and the best way to say it is municipalities this size normally have a higher impact percentage. The city of Corlins is almost fifty percent because the Corlins state is within the confines of the city. We're relatively, I think we're relatively lucky to be at the level we're at.
Because both, actually, Davis College, SUNY, B U, they're all out of the city. So we're not.
We don't have those, we don't have those.
But we do have the most non-privates in the county and private city.
Between, between the city and union, I would imagine, the county and union, I would imagine that there's, because of the similarity in the parcel counts, that there's an association.
And these are basically all set outside of our control?
Yeah, actually, there's thirty-three, thirty-three percent are by state law. One percent of them, actually closer to two percent are veterans of low income over sixty-five, so that are applied for renewally or applying done.
The city of Albany's over sixty percent.
Motion to accept pages one, twenty-one, and one ninety-four and one ninety-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you, Mr. Senator, congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations. Enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
Everybody?
We know. Can I ask you a final question?
Go ahead.
Lee, did you wanna do all of the, all the moving forward by the, by all the pages that are in the grouping? Is that?
That's the normal. I mean, that would be, so that would be the most helpful. One department person.
If for some reason you need to break them up, that's fine.
We'll open up.
I'm just asking because I took notes and I just wanna make sure that I don't.
We're gonna page twenty, forty, and forty-one. This is on purchasing.
Page twenty is just the legal ad for posting for the year. They cut it by five hundred. Just don't know how many legal ads will go out, you know, that's for the bits that the city does for all their report that they send out. That's all it is, is for border country supply for sending out there.
Any significant changes on your?
No, uh, no, just increased posting a little bit because postage rates went up first of the year again, so I foresee it going up again because the postal service has already told me it's gonna probably go up again next year. And otherwise, everything else, I either cut it a little bit or kept it the same, so it's basically pretty flat from what it was before.
Mike, I got a question.
Sure.
With the, with A one six-six-zero, five, five-one, zero-zero-zero personnel services, I'm just curious to know what the, because I, I'm not seeing in the breakdown, you know, why we're getting an extra ten thousand in the personnel from the adopted twenty-nineteen to the, to the adopted twenty.
That's salaries, I have no control on the union matters.
So basically, I think, and I'm guessing, I've knocked my head out, I don't know, what is it, I think it was two percent for.
I think it's two percent.
Yeah, the personnel services in here are my storekeepers only, it's not any, anybody else. It's my four storekeepers and that's all, I'm not, one CSEA and three eighteen here.
So when the budget was passed last year, we only knew what the twenty-eighteen rates were because the contract was settled. So now you're going from twenty-eighteen rates to twenty-five.
So play catch-up?
Yes.
Yeah, play catch-up, because they have a record check they got.
Then happen just on the DPW department or the teamsters, that teamster supervisor was.
Right. I'll make a motion of through page twenty, forty, and forty-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we may have you out of here. Time. We're closer than. I've got twenty minutes. Hi, Ray.
Thank you.
All right, so let's open up pages twenty-nine, thirty, and one ninety-eight.
Ray, the, it's, the adjustment of the city, assistant city engineer, it says adjusted to forty hours, how many hours are they going up from?
I mean, the answer is, because you're gonna see this on a couple other spots.
Yeah.
There are people that were thirty-five hours, we've moved them to work forty hours. In most cases, the people were probably working forty-plus hours, so this is to compensate them for.
And it's at the same hourly rate they were making as a thirty-five hour.
So if they were making ten times thirty-five dollars a hour.
Would the benefits change because of that, or?
The only thing that would've changed is really the spike in the worker's count. Basically, it's based on a percentage.
And how long has the assistant engineer been vacant for here?
I have been vacant.
Not the, not the assistant city engineer, the one that you're filling.
It just says assistant engineer.
Assistant engineer? That was vacant in last year's budget because I moved that person to a senior engineer position. So I don't wanna do away with that because we hire lower people and move them up. Somebody comes in as an assistant engineer and they have shown potential and have passed the senior engineer's test and I feel that they're ready, then I'll request the board to move them to a senior engineer.
Right, this is the one we're filling on October seventh, correct?
No, this, that's the one that's in the insurance, covering the insurance line.
Right. Stay out of there.
Right? Yeah. The insurance. Right. This one, this one will not be vacant, but.
Being filled next, uh, October seventh.
Okay.
And then the temporary services and the overtime, so miscellaneous, construction inspection are temporary services and overtime is for construction inspection, are those two lines
Temporary services is for if I need extra assistance with inspection. Dominic Cercani usually does that for us. And overtime is overtime.
Well, it says construction inspection.
That's what it is.
So like when they're doing these projects, like.
Contractors don't always leave at two-thirty, they work till five. My staff has to cover that, so that's overtime.
The professional services line, you know, we only have the last two years on year, is that consistently significantly above twenty-five thousand dollars at the end of the year? And if so, why is it consistently only budgeted at twenty-five thousand dollars?
The answer is, it's a term we're related to a project that comes up that we need to do that. Maybe a grant, okay, that comes up that we need to bring someone in to do it, so we use Greyhound to do it. So it's usually that, because we need more money, it's usually like Front Street, right? We got Greyhound. Something may come up during the year where I have to use a term contract and that's where I would pay that term contract out of, so I can't anticipate all those all the time. Some are emergency stuff that I have to handle. Something'll come up, a grant'll come in and we, we'll get applied, come in and we didn't know we were gonna apply for it. Something will come up, a grant will come in, we will get applied, come in, and we didn't know we were gonna apply for it. When we put the budget together, and then the grant comes in, so you gotta cover the, so that's, that's why it fluctuates.
But if you look at the last five or ten years, is it consistently double or triple or budgetable amount that we?
There's usually ordinances that come in here that increases it. It was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So you're budgeting twenty-five thousand, and you always seem to be, and you always seem to be spending more.
But he doesn't know today what that grant's gonna come in.
Which I'm glad that you're budgeting low, but evidently you, you, the money coming out of contingency or where do you have it?
But that comes out of the new revenue.
Yeah, we'll come down here, we'll come to council, we'll say we want to increase this grant revenue and increase this professional services.
See it through the grant?
Yes.
So anytime you increase in the professional services line engineering budget, there would be also?
Not, not every time, not every time. I don't want to say every time, because that's not always true.
Okay.
If it's a big increase, generally that comes because of a grant that came in and we put the revenue. Yes.
And I assume that the encumbered expenses for technical services is because it's so low because we do a lot of this testing after the season is repaired consistently?
Technical services covers, as an example, asphalt testing. We have a testing company that we're under contract with, that they send a representative to the asphalt plant to make sure that the product that manufactured there is correct.
Mike, sorry. So who we're testing, no, this is who we're testing.
Yeah, we pass the test, right? Let me know if we're doing it right.
Yep.
When curbs and sidewalks are poured, when the concrete gets to the job site, test cylinders are taken, make sure that the concrete's proper mix, has the strength that it's supposed to add. MS four annual report, that's in it, because the city is part of the MS four, there's an annual report that we have to submit to, and that fee is twenty-five hundred dollars, so, and then we have a little bit of miscellaneous testing in case something comes up during the year. That's how that comes about. Any more questions?
We have to do one ninety-eight separate.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve pages twenty-nine, twenty-three. At twenty-nine, thirty.
Alright, motion to approve twenty-nine and thirty.
You can make one vote to approve twenty-nine, thirty, and one ninety-eight, because one ninety-eight, that portion, that engineering portion is considered a separate page unto itself. That's what I was trying to say about that.
Oh, okay.
We're not approving page one ninety-eight, we're approving that portion of one ninety-eight that relates to engineering.
And do we have to make that clear in our motion?
I'll, I'll just retract.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a quick question about one ninety-eight. Oh, right, yeah, no questions.
Alright, motion to approve twenty-nine, thirty, and one ninety-eight.
Second?
Let's go through one ninety-eight.
Oh, alright. Engineering hardware.
No, it's a construction engineer.
It's construction engineering.
Page one ninety-eight, the construction engineer. It's two point four million for street reconstruction, eight hundred thousand for EDA ramps, five hundred thousand for water lines, one point six million for sewer lines, and two hundred thousand dollars for city hall improvements, and one point two million, which we'll get from the state ownership's money.
Is this more than, more than years past?
No.
I think it's differently allocated.
It looks differently.
Yes, it's not like water lines are way down, street reconstructions are up.
But it's total figure wise.
I think it's very, I think it's in the ballpark of previous years.
Some, some may have. They have a major project or something that had to be done, might get one like that.
What do we have allocated for the two hundred thousand going towards the hall improvements, the twenty-seven plan?
Most of that's related to the city hall fire station.
The floor?
Floor.
Do we have a?
We're working on it.
For concentrate.
Think it is getting fixed. That's one of the reasons we have to do it, because we use some money for it.
Are they gonna be agreed?
It gets raining the way it does.
I was hoping you would start mowing it after. No, I was just wondering if it was gonna be a green rule. Sorry, I'll make a motion to accept pages twenty-nine, thirty, and one ninety-eight.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any case, done, so approve. Thank you very much, Ray.
Yep.
Thank you.
Who's here for Mr. Murphy?
I said I would do it.
Alright, this page seventy-one and seventy-two.
It's really very little different than that from last year.
What's the, is the increase in Personnel Services the same as, was I asked the same question about?
That is correct.
Okay.
Everything else is budgeted.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept pages seventy-one, seventy-two.
Lou, you need a book tomorrow.
What, you need to what?
Need a book.
You need a book?
You didn't get one. He's got the twenty nineteen budget.
Both the pages are close.
I thought there was one sitting on the table here earlier.
Who reads it every year? Is it like, that's a twenty nineteen too? Oh, there is?
That's two twenty.
Oh, that's because you weren't the state of this, the guy in your eyes. So I didn't tell you.
It's not Chuck's fault.
So what'd you do with it?
It's not Chuck's fault.
It was Chuck's fault.
Alright.
Chuck is down here, it's Chuck's fault.
All in favor that it's Chuck's fault?
Aye.
I, I made a motion.
And I seconded it.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, none, so we move on.
Mr. Carson.
Mr. Carson.
What we're getting, doing on that, but I think there's an error, I'm not gonna be doing ninety-four, that's under.
You've got to wait.
Yeah, it's still votes, but it's, there's no section five eighty-six on that page.
One more page.
Ninety-three, ninety-four, and ninety-six. Ninety-three and ninety-six.
Ninety-four, ninety-six, yeah.
Ninety-four is repeated in both.
Oh, okay.
And there's nothing that's, that I have on that page.
Ninety-three and ninety-six is self-correct.
That's my fault.
Howdy? So, this one may look a little weird because we're in the, well, we've basically cut a portion out of the planning department to make the housing and administration department, so that's why housing, page ninety-three, is basically getting zeroed out, and that's why we have the new page ninety-six, which is the head admin and housing. Most of the stuff's the same as last year, some salary positions have changed. We lost Steve this year, but we're gonna replace Steve and the sort of the open one from Sue with Jeff now. Salaries are roughly the same. I tried to cut where I could, but this is my first year, so hopefully this stuff works out well. One new line is closing in here, and that's because I don't want Pete getting rusty on his foot, so provide him boots and any other safety equipment he's gonna need. And other than that, we're, we didn't cut everything, but we're definitely gonna be spending more on training and conferences probably than we're gonna do this year, because I gotta get all my guys trained up, so. And we're zeroing out the APA membership, we don't need it. And the notary renewal of, we need it, we'd like to keep it in there at zero, but you only need a notary every four, five years or something, so obviously nothing this year, he doesn't need it.
Sounds like you did a pretty good job, Steve.
I'd like to make a motion to accept pages ninety-three and ninety-six.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? So we will approve ninety-three and ninety-six.
Good night.
Okay, Homer Simpson.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Oh, well, you should have, or do you not have one now? It's like you didn't have it. Well, you can have mine.
Take my second. We're gonna open up pages seventy-three, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety-five, ninety-four, and two hundred through two hundred and eight.
Two hundred to two hundred and eight is just the fee schedule. So if a department's proposing to change the fee schedule, we're treating that the same as like a capital line. We'll address their changes in the fee schedule, you'll approve those separately, and at the end, you'll approve the entire fee schedule.
Alright, so we'll start with page seventy-three. Board Member Services.
That's the stipends for COD or?
Yep.
That's normal. Now, how many meetings do they have to attend before they give you stipend? Because of eighty-four, it's like, eighty-four is the meeting order.
Any more questions on that?
All the same? All the same?
It's close.
Ninety-five?
Ninety-four.
I think they're out of order.
Yeah, they are out of order. But you, but they're ordered, out of order in the list.
Oh, mine's, mine's in order.
Oh, really?
It's supposed to be in order?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yours is in order.
No, never mind.
Mine's in order.
It's the other way around.
Right, right.
Any comments on ninety-five?
Ninety-five, oh, I thought we were going through eighty-eight.
You already approved them, you're good, keep going.
We're moving fast.
They looked at them and said, those are good.
Okay.
Why, were you worried about those pages?
No.
What were the problems you were worried about?
We have a vacancy in the zoning board of deals and the planning commission, we're hoping to.
Are we expecting to see extra work for like the zoning enforcement officer as a result of these zoning overhaul?
We're hoping that it reduces.
Really?
Yeah, we'll put on less count. It'll be, I think every development meeting session will be more, having a better attendant, explaining the new changes across this. There'll be less need for the hands. There are no, don't go to two hundred to two oh eight, there are no fee changes. There are no fee changes for that. Put that out in the air.
Got it.
Do we sell to, uh, approve with means, or?
You'll pay it every time, if you hit the ones that change.
Like if Coach comes in and they have changes?
Through their presentation.
Apparently, they don't. We're gonna delete those pages from.
Your professional services, you have five thousand, two thousand, you have three thousand, huh?
We're trying to cut it, I could use a five thousand, but we won't.
You didn't use it last year.
We did.
I'm sorry?
We did.
Oh, you did.
In eighteen, they didn't use it, in nineteen, they.
What did, what did you use it for?
Why, why did we make the cut out?
Just looking for exam.
Probably only in need of for survey.
Alright, let's see.
We're close.
Yeah, we got two minutes.
What we spent it on this year is not as, we'll not see where.
This year, we spent it on the SCA focus, quality and integrity review that's going on about cities really. That's done, and then next year, we'll be using it hopefully for a survey.
Sure.
Okay.
And if we need more, we'll ask.
There's more opportunities for doing good things, don't let that hold back.
Well, the department heads have done superb job with keeping their budgets.
They have, they really have.
There's nothing here to cut, they've done everything they could.
Make the motion to trash another.
One more question, and it's also related to the zoning overhaul, because I'm interested to know, you know, we're anticipating any new revenue coming from, you know, reclassification of properties that may be incorrectly classified now, that, you know, zoning overhaul will make it easier to identify. I mean, are we, are we accounting for that at all in the budget, or is that just if we get extra money from that, then?
No, actually, if you're talking about getting tax money, is that what you're?
Yeah, like if they go from, from, you know, homestead to non-homestead, given the, given the increase.
The chances of that being done before this budget and taxes are there is like nil.
Okay.
Well, it's less than nil because that's, that's based on an assessment that would be next March, that won't kick in until twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
But that would be through the assessment process, not really through the zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve pages seventy-three, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety-four, and ninety-five.
Number two, two hundred to two oh.
No. There are no.
Okay, we don't have to prove them.
That is deleted, planning did not have any proposal to repeat changes.
Okay, great, well, then I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Congressman Crone, solid favor.
Too late, I'm sleeping.
Any against? None, so everything's been approved.
I didn't listen.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, we're adjourned.